Well, that's loud.
All right, it is six o'clock and I am bringing this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council for April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Everyone can please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And Wendy, if we can do a roll call.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Absent.
Absent.
And it is an excused absence.
Councilmember Bryan?
Absent.
Also an excused absence.
Councilmember Lukeyezi?
Here.
And council member and mayor, Clarno?
Here.
All right, we don't have any special presentations or announcements tonight, so we will move on to public comment. Any member of the public who wishes to speak will have three minutes to do so. If your topic has to do with anything under item number ten or eleven, we do request that you save your comment for anything on those items for that time. There will be public comment for those items when we get to those items. If you would please state your name and address for the record before beginning your public comment, and I will give a thirty-second warning when your time is almost up. Whoever, if anyone would like to go first, please approach the podium. We will do in-person first and then Zoom second. When the time comes for everyone on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, just use the Raise Your Hand, which is under the Reactions tab.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, although there's very few here tonight, so maybe you won't be so strict on the three minutes. I wanted to talk a little bit about leadership and the agendas that we're likely to see in the next few months ahead. I thought that the Siskiyou Economic Development Council did a rather excellent job putting out this handbook on how to exercise leadership skills if you're a local elected official. You have skills, you have powers, you need to know how to use them effectively. Because as it concludes, economic development can only be accomplished with support and leadership from local elected officials. Officials can promote and support the strategic vision for development in the community regardless of rank and influence. The vision for economic development is progressed towards by leveraging available resources, including the role of local leaders. And that leads directly into your retention of the Cosmod Company and all the strategies that it has put forth to revitalize Dunsmere's downtown economy. I'm obviously disappointed it's not on this agenda. I doubt it will be on the next agenda. I don't know when we will ever see it again. But, Mr. Mayor, I respectfully asked you to put the historic district oversight on the council's agenda on multiple occasions. Where is the city's leadership? Dunsmere Live has repeatedly sought to partner with the city to restore and reopen the California Theater. Where is the city's leadership? The group that sponsored Dunsmere's Veterans Day event, which includes councilmember Lukeyezi, thank you, and the sheriff, thank you, would like to move on to develop the veteran housing. Where is the city's leadership? None of the above will ever happen unless the city enforces its empty and abandoned building ordinance. Where is the city's leadership? Democracy is supposed to be a partnership between elected representatives and those they serve. I urge all of you to speak to these issues and to tell us your priorities. What are we going to do in the months ahead beyond simply adopting minutes and approving the checkbook? Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Dwight Bailey, fifty-nine oh six Castle Avenue. I'm sure glad to see the minutes of the special meeting on the agenda today. I was curious as to why they weren't done last meeting. That would be my public comment. Back to what Arthur was saying there a little bit. I do realize there has been some progress. I read in your consent calendar that you're still paying Wright and Associates to be our attorney for some of what he was talking about. I think that needs to not be an agenda item. I think the public needs to be informed about action going on with that individual. I don't think it's fair to hide that from the public by just making it an agenda item. Thank you.
All right, anyone else this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment for this evening. And we will move on to item number five, council and staff comments. Sergeant Ortiz, lead us off today.
Thank you, Mayor. The sheriff's office has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
All right. Okay, just making sure it's on. All right, so let's see, we got a list here. Door City Hall is ready for pickup. We'll get that hopefully picked up next week and installed here in the next couple of weeks. Library roof is scheduled for next week, barring any weather, as we've been trying to get five days of free weather and haven't had that lately. Dogwood trees, we have, how many do we have? Thirty something? Thirty dogwood trees, and they'll be planted in locations throughout the city. And in the parks and stuff like that, up around City Hall area. Trying to think where else we were planting them. Just a number of locations, and I'll have an update on that next council meeting. We are, Blake's not here. He's, actually, we're in the process of audit today and tomorrow. So he's working on that. Union Pacific has taken down the house off of Sacramento over here, and they're taking down a bunch of posts and pulled those, and they are taking down those garages up on the, up on the north there. So all of that will be cleaned up, and if you see red Xs on any of that stuff, that's all going. Hopefully, it'll be out of here by in the next week. So we're moving progress on that. We have a refined estimate on the public workshop and hoping to take that to the next finance committee so we can go for funding. Greenway State, May fourth, will be at the Ball Field. Susan's on, no, he's not on tonight. But I'll have him come to the next council meeting and give an update on the plans for that. And then met with the Botanical Gardens, kind of our initial kind of transition coordination type stuff from maintenance side. So Public Works will be working with them to just, you know, manage the botanical garden area. Met with Park and Rec. Haven't met with, well, I think Venice has met with the Homegrown Boys, but I have not met with them yet. So we're working on just kind of the progress of the parks and stuff like that, and we hope to have a shortened budget for the rest of this fiscal year, and then we'll have, we might be all fitted in this budget, but then we'll have a proposed budget for what we're going to call Parks and Trails for next fiscal year coming here soon. So I just got the budget stuff, so I'm starting to work on budget and those kind of things. And that's all.
All right. Councilmember Kaiser?
I want to clarify something. The reason that we consent the agenda for the check register is so that we're not here until three o'clock in the morning going over the check. It's available for the public, and if you want to really know about each individual check, I suggest you try and join the finance committee and be part of so that by the time you get here, you would already know what most of us already know. It's just a formality for timekeeping and saving. It's not to hide anything. I've been here twelve years, and that's just kind of the way it's done. If we tried once before and there was a question, it was like eleven thirty, nine, I believe, Mr. Doris. So it's just the way that it's been done. We're not trying to hide anything. I want to put that, Mr. Mayor, I, while we've got the Luther V tournament coming up, it's the twenty-seventh of April. It's a lake chesting golf course, and there's still time. If you or your friends want to get a team and play us, I'm going to be playing this year in a team. I do have a request. There's been a couple of people that they, you know, that they might, maybe even you guys might agree with me on this. I think that it would be due to the city. To the park, the park, the day. I mean, we basically worked here till we died looking there. It's just something that was a lot. I'd like to put that out there, hoping that you guys will agree with me. We've been fifteen years working there, day in, day out, and keep going in the cloud, and we gave this full commitment to that park. Up until recently, that park, which is higher than everything, where I grew up on the grass, it's been broken straight to the bottom of the park. One time, and eight years, it's been a good deal. We don't really think it's good. It can be named every day of the grass. I think he was trees. I think he grew a lot of this sort of flower. This is our, so that would be a request. I've had four or five people say something about such a kind of thing. Except you. Absolutely.
Maybe ask them.
Good through this. That's all I got.
What do you think? What about number fifty? All right, and I do have a message to pass along from councilmember Deutsch tonight, and that is that the building Dunsmere's future event has been postponed until May eleventh. So it moved from April twentieth to the eleventh, just due to some logistics.
But it's also moved to the Dunsmere Elementary School and cafeteria, which by the way, will be a new sound effect. I will redo our this outside.
Great, and with that, we'll move on to committee reports. I know the finance committee was scheduled three weeks ago and next week. So we didn't, I don't think we're meeting next week because Blake and Matthew. All right, so no committees, and with that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have two minutes to approve the special meeting of three-five and the regular meeting of three-twenty-one.
I'm going to propose to three minutes for three-five and three-twenty-one.
Been moved and seconded. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both me and Edith are approved. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which today consists of the check register for three-sixteen to three-twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three. That is moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. All right, there is no public hearing tonight, and we will move on to item number ten, Old Business, which tonight is a RFP for on-call planning services.
All right, Mayor and Council, in November twenty twenty-three, our previous contract planner had designed, and so here's our plea to look forward to get a permanent planner in place for our on-call services and replace our interim. Interims have been doing a good job, but still we hope we need to put out a couple of tools to do it the right way. So before we, so plan publication of the RFP will be tomorrow essentially, and then we receive those off May third, the border of the passage.
Do you know if, I don't know.
I do not know.
Some more clarifying questions before we move on to the public comment for this item? All right, I will open this item up for public comment. So if anyone would like to make a comment regarding RFP for on-call planning services, it's the same rule as the general public comment that we had earlier, three minutes. I'll give a thirty-second warning, and to start out, please state your name. And seeing no public comment, I will close for this item.
I would second that.
All right, it is moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go for it. All right, with that, we'll move on to New Business. Item number A is RFP for Human Resources Consultant.
All right, similar to the previous item, Human Resources Consultant Services, council gives the directive to be on. Look for this on call group on all the resource services.
Any clarifying questions? Any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? All right, with that, I will open up this item for public comment. So if anyone has, would like to speak on the RFP for Human Resources Consultant item, you may approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. Three minutes, and I will give a thirty-second warning, and please state your name and address for the record.
At least I know forty-one twenty-eighth, I've been here thirty-six years. On the consulting stuff, I didn't understand. This is the last time you guys talked about it. So are we paying somebody to be a human resource person, and for what? I mean, I didn't understand. I know they're consulting to, what, revitalize? They're the consultants on the revitalization, right? Not the streets. This is the revi- So they want to hire somebody for human resources, like to be a personnel person?
Address that one to them too, once we're done with public comment.
I just want, if they are going to hire somebody, if we are going to pay them, how much?
Is there any other public comment?
Dwight Bailey, fifty-nine oh six Castle Avenue. The comment that I have on this, I have no objection to hiring the council. But we just went through a whole housing update that we are going to give to the state. And I'd like to remind you, almost every category in there leaves the responsibility up to two people, city manager, county commissioner, and speaker for the council. My comment during the hearing, during the hearing, about finance mission, I would ask first, if it wasn't one of the two people, the city manager and the planner, the third one, the planner, the manager, the speaker, the board. Comment that's given by the council was that none of the things on the plan that we send into the state are most likely not to get done. We're not going to add four more houses or buy more low-income. We're not going to do a lot of things in there. It's just data that we have to give the state in order to be a good person with them. So I think it might be proper to change the word planner to what the job description of this might apply to.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? And seeing none, I will close public comment for this evening. We'll go into council discussion.
I'm confused.
So really, so really quick to answer some of this, so a little bit of background. I know you weren't here because you recused yourself, but during the closed session, the three city council members who were part of the employee termination did direct, we did take action to direct city staff to go to third-party consultant. We felt it was important to get someone in to assist the city manager, as well as the rest of the staff, with training, as well as doing the paperwork, because one of the things that has been pointed out is there's a lot to do and there's not a lot of people. The other thing, too, is having a third-party human resource consulting is it helps with employee manager issues that may arise, because again, it's a third-party person. So it's very similar to our third-party administrative hearing officer. That person is not directly involved with everybody else during the day, so they're looking at it from a very objective standpoint. And we felt that that was important, that we go out for proposals to take a look at the consulting services. The RFP does not mandate that we hire one, but we felt that it was good to go out and see what is available for the city council to hire and have that be a third party. It just, it helps us with viability sake for moving forward. And the other thing, too, is this does not commit us to spending any money at this point. So when we go out for a request for a proposal, consultants will give us a list of services and how much they cost for that service. The specific services that we're requesting to see how much they're going to be is on page two of the RFP, which is page forty-seven of the packet, which goes around to helping with employee evaluations, hiring and onboarding, management of employee records, personnel manual, working with the union, different things like that.
Keep going.
Yeah. There's seventeen of them, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to read through every single one, but they're in the packet, and they're in the RFP, and so we're asking for these types of services to help also the staff training programs, regular communication. The same thing, too, is that if we do get an employee complaint, this HR consultant will take a look at that employee complaint and look at that from a third-party objective standpoint. So again, if a member of the public has an employee complaint, this HR consultant would take over and assist with the review of that in following state codes in relation to employee law. That's the other thing, too, is that HR law, and you probably speak to this, is its own,
I was going to in just a second.
is its own animal. The other thing that we have in here for the request for proposal is potentially taking on payroll as well as order compensation administration. So one of the things Dwight had brought up is we have a very limited staff. And so having the city manager has been serving as the HR personnel so far, and so going to a consultant will open up more time for the city manager to manage the city as opposed to HR. And so the payroll piece is completely optional. That's just if staff feels like that's going to be a good use of our money in comparison to, like, spending some time doing that. So there's a couple of different options in here for everybody. But it doesn't commit any amount, so it doesn't commit us to pay anybody anything, because we could get four proposals with very widely different amounts, and this gets brought back. So whether we go for an on-call planner, planning firm, on-call HR firm, or anything like that, it always has to come back for contract negotiation and contract approval. So there's no fees or amounts associated with this. It's basically like passing out your line into the lake and see what you get for these types of services.
You're out of this. So I'm totally oblivious, but I'm looking at this. So we're going to spend some money.
We're not spending money yet, so we're just going out to ask.
Let me back up.
We could see the proposal.
We just gave City Hall, everybody in City Hall, raise. Everybody got more money because of the task. Now we're going to hire somebody, spend more money to have them do, here's my, okay. Review annual performance review process, including creating newer and new forms of history. Where's the ones, it's like, who's going to manage an employee's records assistant? Who's valuations and get raises and promotions? And all the stuff I thought, city manager. Done. There's a lot, there's, there's a lot of things here that it seems like we're paying to take the load off of the city staff that we just gave the raise to because they had to do all this. So I almost got stuck.
So I'm going to step in here for just a second. So a lot of what this, someone in this position does, and for those of you who aren't aware, my day job is I'm the human resources director up at the ski park. So I do this kind of stuff on a daily basis. And at this, at a city of this scale and in a position like this, this is really just more oversight, or someone we can call. It's like John, when we have a legal question.
But he ain't wearing the show.
Uh, no.
No, the agent, it's on-call. It's available when needed.
Hey, if we've got a question, we need to look this up or.
I thought we're paying someone to assume all these responsibilities. Jesus, I mean.
No, if needed, they would serve in this capacity.
Or at least advise us.
Advise us, or, and a lot of times, like, a lot of this stuff is fairly, can be fairly simple, and so they just kind of throw it in. I mean, we're just kind of throwing out a wide net, seeing what comes back at the cost wise.
So like, for example.
Hey, but nothing that we just went through was simple.
No, exactly, and that was the point of our closed session discussion that resulted in this action is we, as councilors, were in that discussion, gave direction that we realized we need help on this topic area. So for example, one of the things that's included in here is reviewing our personnel policy manual and recommendations for changes. I don't even know the last time we did a personnel manual update. It's a big hunking, like, thing about, you know, tattoos, clothing, you know, training updates, and so it all follows the special state and local standards for HR law as well. So yes, right now, the city manager assumes these tasks, but we realize that that's not really, this is, I mean, Michael's full-time job is just this. And so one of the things is we're not going to need a review of certain things every year, and so this gives us, it'll probably a little bit more upfront, because they'd be setting up, you know, this is how you do an employee evaluation, this is how you do a fair league. And I think that was the biggest thing, too, is also keeping records and making sure everything's being done to the federal, state, and regional regulations as well.
And if someone who is.
It's just like in on-call, we call the questions, but he ain't assuming all of them.
No. And so.
They can perform these tasks if they're.
And one thing I have to say on all this, too, is that every single year, it gets more and more and more and more complicated. There are new laws and new, you know, at the state level, at the federal level, that some of them.
Contractors, licensing, things like that.
So.
Okay, so is there a motion to be made?
There is.
I don't have verbiage.
So it would, it would be a motion to approve the recommended request for proposal for on-call human services and authorize the city manager to move.
I'll second that.
Sure.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, unanimous, please.
And just really quick, we could get these proposals, and they may be way outside of our budgets, but at least we want to go out and see what the cost savings could be. We may just go look, we're doing the best we can.
Oh, I understand, I get you. Going out to see. Throw it out there and see what you get back.
All right, with that, we will move on to 11B SB1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funding. Resolution number 2024-03, would the project list receive SB1 funding in fiscal year 2024 and 2025?
All right, Mayor and Council, this, this item is an annual thing that we have to do in order for us to get SB1 funding. So we identify a couple of projects and then we put them forward in a resolution and send it up and say, yeah, we're going to try and do this. So. But Dennis has decided on a couple of projects that we thought were helpful. I think, you know.
Projects we're looking at is curb and gutters, sidewalks, some spots within the city right away that need, may need repair or definitely need repair. The chip seal or crack seal, some of the roads, spread some of the money across to that. The big one that I'd like to see is lighted and flashing crosswalk signs for Florence Loop and Edge Street. And, and get some protection for our traveling people to come through and visit Dunsborough to get across the sidewalk safely. Put all of those in with that. So these are projects that we'd like to throw out to get a public comment on and see where, how they feel about these options.
Dennis, does this have anything to do with, are we still getting Brad Center repaid?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's a, that's a different project.
Okay, cool. That's all I can get about that. You ride a motorcycle down Brad Center, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Any other council question or would you like a public comment on this item?
No, I'm good.
All right. With that, I will open this up for public comment on this item. So if anyone would like to come up and make a public comment relating to this item, you're more than welcome to. Same rules, three minutes, 30-second warning. Please state your name and address for the record. If you're in person, please come up to the podium. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will.
I'm sorry, Debbie, again from Easton, Dunsborough. I'm sorry, I don't know his name.
Dennis?
Dennis.
Dennis, I do have a compliment for you tonight I was going to share. There was a, a, a guardrail on butterflies that had a hole in it or something. And somebody brought it to your attention and they wanted to say thank you that you worked on it and you needed cover it and then you put a cone there and you did something else and made it safe. Because somebody could have, they just thought I'd pass it along. And that you were very questionable.
Well, you'll take all that counts. Attaboy.
All right, any discussions?
Wow, we're really only getting like.
Wait, sorry. One second. I didn't, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. All right, now any discussion?
We're only getting $43,635.
That's it?
That's it.
Yep.
What?
Yeah, the gas tax.
So.
That is silly.
That explains why we're going after lighted crosswalk signs.
We're not going to be able to report flashing signs at this.
Well, yeah, we can, but they're going to blink instead of blink. They're going to be, instead of blink, 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 they're going to be blink. Got to wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, blink.
So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-03 to adopt the project list to serve SB1 funding in the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
I'll second that.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. This does have a fiscal impact, but it's positive, so we're in a roll call.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Deusch, absent. Councilmember Brian, absent. Councilmember Lou Casey?
Aye.
Mayor Clarno?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Well, unanimously for this. And for the corner.
Exactly.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to item number 12, Future Agenda Items. Whether you have anything you'd like to add to the list other than Dale's.
Put on there, Future Agenda Items is a plaque for Dale at the city park. And I'll do a reach out to family and see if I can't get verbiage or, you know.
Or if they want a plaque or.
Yeah, they are doing, they are doing a family service down there coming up, so.
Can you let me know, can you get a number for me to get ahold of?
I'll, I'll see, I'll get something from Mike.
Yeah, the last time I talked to his wife was when I borrowed a bunny suit for Easter.
All right, anything else, man?
No, I'm just working on some things. I believe we do have the Cosmont before coming back at the next meeting.
So I have both Housing Element and Cosmont come back for approval.
Just to appease a few individuals. Where do we stand on the vacant buildings? Is it not a conversation for this time or?
We could probably do a Future Agenda Item in May.
I, I plan on, I plan on bringing it back forward as if, we kind of gave a code enforcement update, what, at the end of, is it February? Somewhere earlier this year. And so really, it's not, I mean, progress in the courts takes time. And so I don't have a lot to update on today. We did have, we did have a hearing for 4427, 4427 Dunsborough Avenue. That hearing got continued to the 18th of this month. That's the house that burned up there, up by Lincoln Street.
Right.
Yeah. And so that, that hearing got continued to the 18th of April. And then we have a number of other items that are kind of in the chute that were close, but I don't know, I haven't the updates on them yet, so.
I guess, thank you.
Are you just looking for maybe a lead on the latest update for the week?
Actually, what I'm trying to do is I see that there are a few concerned people out there in TV land that might need to be appraised. It's coming.
Yeah.
So I just, I just wanted to make it public, you know, for everybody that's watching, that we're working on the vacant distressed buildings.
Yes, it's in progress and we're close.
Okay, you have been warned. Thank you.
All right.
I'll watch your pictures.
I'll second. Thank you, everybody for coming.